What do you think? Yeah, all right, I'll open the minute, the meeting. And Chief Gamache, I think you've got a training you've got to go to, so why don't we start with you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So up to date, 184 emergency incidents in town. And since I last spoke to you, the most significant ones were three searches with the police department. One was for two lost juveniles on Hancock Road that were lost in the woods for about an hour and a half. Two eight-year-old girls, we're finding them. The second one was on West Road. One of the officers, it was more of a police matter, happy to help there. And the last one was this past week on Shaker Road. Somebody was distraught and escaped from the Freedom Academy. Happy to help anytime or call, so the UTV was rolled out all three times. And the family of the Hancock Road one, it was some, you know, parents were two eight-year-old girls just helping the woods explore and they got turned around. And I think the mothers needed more medical than children did, so.
No doubt.
They brought cookies in the car to the fire station and the police station.
Oh, that was. Was that one of the searches that had the helicopter out over the?
Chief can talk about that, but I know that was, yeah, it was one of those, yeah.
Okay, well, I'm glad they were found safe, good.
On fireworks, one of them, we got a great worker relationship with Rob Jacobs, JPI, he does a great job. And whatever we need, whatever we request, he doesn't even blink, he even feeds our crew when we're off there all day.
Really?
State law, we have to be posted as soon as the trailer rolls in, and that's at 3:00 in the afternoon. And fireworks don't go off till 9:30, so it's kind of a long afternoon after the crew that's out there being posted for that trailer. So we've got a good worker relationship with them, so hopefully we can continue that through town. Canterbury Fair this weekend, we're gonna have AMG posted for road race. We're gonna have somebody down here with UTV, and we'll have a presence for at least, at least the morning and early afternoon at the Canterbury Fair. And Penneclough Rescue, we have their posting and the analysts for the race as well.
Great.
We, as you know, as I said last month, we're down on numbers a little bit, so I put a little blog in the newsletter about a recruitment drive. So no new people will come to the door yet, but we're still in good shape, but you know, I'd like to get some more people into the door. So just keep that in your mind if somebody's asking to get into the profession or something like that.
Is there an age requirement? I mean, I know it has to be over 18, but is there an old age requirement, an old age cutoff?
We got a job for everyone.
Okay. Couple of people have asked, who might be a little what one would call long in the tooth, but.
That's okay, that's what I'm talking.
All righty, will do.
And on the last heading, Picard Road to Hydrant, I expected that to be done by now, but we run into problems with the Department of Environmental Services. They can become a deal with, so we're navigating through that, we'll get to that. Incidents reporting, the new platform rolling out in the fall of 2024, and I'm working on that. So right around the turn of this calendar year, the Department of Safety in the state, through E-911 is a division of the Department of State Emergency 911. They handle dispatching and all that stuff, makes basic communications to all the state. They enlisted with a new vendor that basically have a product where somebody in town, and whether every town takes advantage of it is a different story. But you can take the emergency manager of the town, police chief, fire chief, whoever that is, or both. And we can log onto a program on our computer or our phone, and we can send out an emergency notice. You ever get the notices on your phone where you never subscribe to, everything was kind of like flash flood or whatever type of deal? Well, that can come from us if we take advantage of it. There's zero cost of the town, some hoops we have to jump through, I just submitted the paperwork today. Justin, Chief Brody and I, we talked, you know, because not every town takes advantage of it, it's not mandated to do it. But we both thought that it would be a good idea, whether it's Joe Bad Guy running around, or it's a extended power outage, or an imminent, you know, imminent tornado threat. Where we're getting, we can send something out where every cellphone in the Canterbury area by ping can get that notice.
Oh, that, and it's just?
It'll override the silence, override everything.
And it's just Canterbury or the Canterbury area?
Well, we're managing Canterbury, so just Canterbury, basically anybody who's in Canterbury.
And do you have to subscribe, or do we just get?
We have to subscribe, we have to.
I mean, do, like, do I have to subscribe?
No, 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 not at all. Remember Naxle, I don't know if you remember, N-A-X-L-E used to be at that, but you gotta subscribe to that. And then it send you a text like, hey, this road was closed, this is an accident. It's not that level, no, this is, this is something that'll probably be used pretty infrequently every year. And it's not, it's not like the web, the channel, hey, somebody had a chance to find us, so we're not sending that out.
Right, okay.
And this is tornado that's basically crossing Boswell and coming to Canterbury, and I'm aware we're gonna send something out.
Okay.
And, you know, and all the chief parties speak to when he's gonna do it, but hopefully we never need it, but we have that capability now.
Yeah.
And knowing from my perspective, if we're ever gonna send out a notice like that, Ken will be consulted and you'll be notified.
Okay.
Basically, you know, all in that time, that is at least helpful, so.
That's a good idea, thank you.
Okay?
Yep.
And that was, you know, after looking at that a couple of weeks ago, the Texas flat disaster down there and the response and all that stuff. And so I was already working on this, I had already talked to Chief Brody about this, and we both agreed that we're gonna move forward with it. Before this lack of notification for Texas came out, so you know, that just kind of brings everything to the forefront a little bit and magnetizes the importance of it. We, there's a resident in town that, that we determined doesn't have smoker steel detectors, they have no money to install them. But I hooked up a Red Cross, Red Cross is a problem, a program where they will come into a community and install for no charge, smoke detectors, steel detectors. So that's rolling, we got that going on right now with one resident in town. Thankful that they reached out, actually, I believe Sam reached out to us, his name is, or was aware of the situation. We hooked them up with Red Cross, and they're coming to do that.
You had a thing in the newsletter back in the spring about that program. Is it worthwhile to just run a little Bing again at some point and say the program's available if you don't have?
Maybe when the heating season starts, it's probably a good idea, good reminder. I hooked up, I have a future training in the next month with the people that run the National Gas line up Shaker Road. For emergency contacts and training, you know, whatever, whatever we can bring to the table, if something, if that line were to rupture or something like that. So I'm looking forward to that. Last month, I went through a training with the Hampshire Division of Children, Youth and Family on notifications if we were to see something. And if we see something, what happens and all that stuff, I'm bringing that training to our members in October. That's just an awareness type of training and knowing that if you see something, say something. Working with the Speedway also, the event this year is that weekend, September 19th to the 21st. We'll be staffing with a crew, a fire truck and a crew of three each day, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. So leave our ton with one engine, but we've done it in the past, it's the military. And we'll continue with the one of the town beaches that are getting a lot of use, a lot of use, they're very, 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 very busy on one day, so without me. I mean, you know, 30 people.
Wow, nice.
And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
That's a lot, what do you mean, that's all, that's, that is a very full plate, thank you, Chief.
I'll say, no.
Okay, thanks.
Chief Brody, it's a natural segue.
Thank you. You don't want to.
No, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right, since June 15th, we've had 13 incidents, eight arrests, two accidents, 119 citations and 516 approvals for service. We had 20 hours of training. We have the fair coming up this weekend, all four of us will be there during the day, and then Jordan will be on at night during fireworks. We have training coming up on Sunday, we'll all be on Sunday as well. That's all I got for the past month.
Just, can I ask one quick question? Is 516 calls for the month high, or?
This time of year, it's average.
Okay, thanks.
Second page. So I don't know if you all know, we've gotten zero applicants. I have had two conversations with people that I know that were willing to come here for a pay cut. Unfortunately, the pay cut I was giving them was a lot more than they were willing to take. This is something that we looked at probably two or three years ago, I don't remember. Me and Brad were dead.
Yeah.
I just never really got into it. It's a living pay scale, so it moves up with the cost of living every year, that way there's no falling behind. Dunbarton uses this, and Dunbarton steals people from Goffstown and other bigger agencies because they never fall behind. It's just something that I'm looking to put into place next year. To start out, steps are the steps that I'm gonna be using. I can explain those if you want. The one that Dunbarton uses, it expires out in 10 years, I've stretched it to 15 years, because I think maxing out in 10 years is often quick. Right now, we would have a patrol minimum step one, and then sergeant position. The step three gives me, I guess we'll call it wheelroom for if I hire a new officer or if I hire somebody with experience. Gives me something to offer, where if I start with step one, I can only hire somebody that's new.
Ah, okay.
As far as the budget's concerned, I have no plans of raising anything else in my budget next year. Except for the things I don't have any control over, and it would have raised my overall budget 6% to be able to do this.
To be able to do this, yeah.
And this would be the only large increase for the next couple of years, it would just be the cost of lives. So I wanted to get that on your radar, get your insight on it in the future.
Won't be long, it'll be budget time, so.
Right, and that's why I wanted to get it out there, you know, I wanted you guys to look at it, you know, get your thoughts on it. Another thing I wanted to talk about was possibly giving Deanna 36 hours when we make her full-time. Because she's not gonna want to stay part-time forever and try to replace that position, it's not easy.
Yeah. How many hours are we thinking she works?
She works 30 now.
For no benefits?
Well, right now, she's got no benefits.
Yeah, I would assume that's.
Yeah, someone her age, she's not gonna do part-time forever.
And you want to raise her to how many hours?
36.
36 to make her full-time.
I think 36 is what she would need to be full-time. And I have the work to give her, but we'd also include the fire department and highway and all three. I've already talked to John and Chief Gamache, and they would find stuff, just answer phones and do all their, what they need, so they take a little bit off their plates as well.
Yeah.
Just something to think about.
Yeah, and what are you thinking for her with, you know, is everything at the same time?
She's not included in this, but if we can do it in 2026, great, we'd have to figure out, obviously, if we pay her and stuff like that.
Understood, yeah.
And figure that's a six-hour, six more hours than she's already getting, and then whatever the benefits are, I don't know if those includes money-wise, but.
Yeah.
If that's something to at least look at.
Yeah.
Well, it'd be worth looking at, especially if there's work to be done that isn't getting done in the, you know, fire and highway departments that she could pick up.
Work getting done, she's, I'm doing it, or John's doing it, or Chief Gamache's doing it, it would just free us up more.
Right, so that would be, that would be good. Okay.
We learned our lesson when Deb left, you know, trying to train Jan, when none of us knew how to do the job, and then when Jan left, trying to train her. Which is not an easy position to train for, the whole 91A and everything that you need to learn, classes you had to go to, so trying to replace her is not an easy task. Yeah. I know some departments already talked to her, so I'm trying to, trying to get ahead of that.
Somebody trying to poach our people, come on.
Part of what she's doing, she's part of a group with all the administratives, you know, they email each other all the time, so.
Poaching is the thing.
It is, it is.
So you'll bring this all, are we covered enough with the people that we have until this comes up in budget season with the?
Covered enough.
With the, with the people that you have, you haven't had any new applicants, but with?
I mean, I'm still one officer short.
Okay.
By raising this, I'm hoping I can get people to come here.
Okay.
The things that we were offering before, you know, taking cars and four-on-three-off, all the other agencies are now doing that as well. So we don't have that, we had that before, that's how we got Officer Westgate and Officer Brody. So all the other agencies are doing the same thing, they just pay a little bit more now.
Okay.
So that's where we're stuck at. Because I know Lavine's got four applicants right now. I was talking to him today. Any questions?
No, but thank you for providing this well ahead of time.
Yeah, I'll probably have more after I actually read this and digest it, but thank you.
Yeah, the actual percentage goes up to 6.35%.
Oh, 6.3?
Yeah, 6.35. But again, not gonna raise any other line except the ones that I have no control over.
Okay.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Sam, you wanna go next?
Interesting. Thank you, oh, wait, have you already, I already have one of these. Oh, no, I don't, I lied. Okay.
Receivables are as usual. We sent out reminder letters because they're basically three weeks from the due date, so these folks all receive reminder letters, it says we have bills that are due. Nobody, nobody is jumping out at me except for, second page, middle of the page is Brenda Juritis. She has a small bill, but nobody's contacted us, Mr. Sires has died. So that's one to look at and watch. The only other one to start thinking about is, put on the radar is Lovren property.
I just saw it showed up a couple of times.
Yeah. Nobody has made any attempts to pay that bill, so. It's better to have a plan when we go into the leaning process this spring and into the deeding process early summer, rather than wait until, yeah, we hit that, so. Any questions, any clarifications should get ironed out way before we do that.
Yeah.
And that'll, the deeding for that comes up, you said spring?
Next spring.
Right.
First week of August is certification, and then we got September and October tax collector and tax law conferences. Questions for me?
I don't think so, thank you, Sam. Is, is the rest of the, of everything seen pretty much within the normal?
Yeah, there's other people that haven't paid that I've seen, so they're here, they're, so now they're gonna get a second letter and, oh. Somebody came in today and said, went to a wrong email address, or went to somebody else's email address that shouldn't have.
Okay.
So, type of thing. Or he was certain that it was gonna be a paper bill, it never came, so.
Okay, I've had that happen. What's the, what's the new date when it's, red lights start going off if somebody hasn't paid?
Oh, March.
Okay.
Yeah, it's gonna be March, because we don't do anything until after that second bill, it's well due.
Okay.
So it'll be after September 1st.
Okay, thank you.
Good, Sam? One question, Sam, I got an email, NHMA on the veto update, SB 213, the electioneering by public employees. Do you know they're, NHMA is encouraging all employees, municipal employees to send a note to the governor. And if the Slockman or anybody other town officials want to send anything, they have emails. Have you, you know, the Town Clerks Association done anything about it?
I haven't heard anything from them, just NHMA.
Right. How forward this email around, it has all the things.
I got it, yeah.
Okay, if anybody wants to do it, or if you want to do it as a group.
I definitely agree, yeah, and I think we should consider this.
I agree. It, it seems like it would be, could be a dangerous bill that could affect all of us.
Absolutely.
I mean, just for offering information on a warrant article or anything like that, potentially there could be a problem with that, so. I think it'd be good for all of us.
Is there a timeframe for us to weigh in on?
It doesn't, it's one of the bills that's waiting to be signed, it passed, and they're asking the governor to veto it, so I think as soon as possible it would be.
Should we decide on that tonight, that soon?
Yep, I think so. I think, I would encourage it, because, because we have people ask us all the time, like I say, as simple, something as simple as a warrant article. If we give them information, and it could be construed as electioneering, so.
I sent a big one, you know, to her this afternoon, if you wanted to use it as some template for the letter.
Sure, sure.
Um.
Yeah.
Uh, if you want to delete what I sent, then you could see.
Why don't we do this, why don't we get through our department head reports?
Yeah.
And then we'll come back to that after.
Okay.
Okay, because if, the sooner the better, then we can.
Yeah.
I'm sure Mrs. Baker has better places to be, so does Sam, John maybe.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam, appreciate your time.
All righty, thank you.
Mrs. Baker?
May I?
You can call.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
We are in the last week of summer reading, which I know everyone's in a tussle about the fair, but we do that just about every week. In fact, June and July, we did 27 programs on and off-site, so we're having, we're experiencing huge numbers. We cannot be more excited about that. Our participation brings in families from all over the area, so feeling really good about that. And again, we have cleaned up the use of the town hall and collaborating with the fair. Base state books, I've arranged for them to come the Monday after the fair. Rick Crawford says that he will get some volunteers to clean out the town hall, so that should probably be done by the end of day Monday, so.
The base state books will come take up all the leftovers?
Yeah, that's, I've had them come the last five years, and they take all the remainers. And then the tables get moved away, and then we'll be able to clean it, or someone will be able to clean it. But yeah, they've done it in the past. Customarily, back in the day, there used to be a market for used books, and there, there isn't anymore. So base state books comes and redistributes them, so it's a hook and dirty way of getting the town hall emptied. Speaking of collaboration, Big Truck Day was a huge success, 185 people in attendance. So thank you notes are going out to highway, fire, police, area businesses, it was a huge success. It's a wonderful time that a lot of families are able to think, especially the highway guys who are unseen. And it's a real positive time, because it's probably, you don't get a ton of positive feedback, John, so. But they certainly do on Big Truck Day, so I really, I really love that event. And again, 180 kids, a lot of, a lot of kids circling through there. My trustees are not meeting in July because of the fair, the all, the all-encompassing fair. They will meet again in August. And August is a time where we try to take our vacation time. I have enough, Cal could tell you I have enough vacation to never work again, so that's, that's something on me. Like, I need to make sure that I am taking my paid time off and my staff are. We've just been so short-staffed and so busy, it's just very hard for us to do that, so we're gonna concentrate on, on doing that, just to be, you know, fair to our staff. But we, we are busy. On a side note, couldn't help but notice, you were talking about Senate bill and House bill. I am also the president of New Hampshire Library Association, and we have written a letter. It's enrolled currently with the governor, which just means it's just kind of sitting here on our desk. Because electioneering certainly would affect libraries. So luckily, we had a great breakthrough on House bill through 24, and that was a veto letter that we had, had issued. And the governor did not pass it into law, so that was the book banning through school libraries, which did not have to do with public libraries. But that's a harbinger of things to come in terms of mandating our collection. And I'm meeting with the governor in August to talk about the New Hampshire library system, so. All that.
Go, tell him we said hi.
So other than that, we're just busy collaborating with our good farmers market partners in Canterbury Country Store. Just really, really enjoying the collaboration that we're seeing each and every day. Of course, what happens is not everyone can attend all of our special wonderful events, because there's too many to go around. But it's an also a good time to be in this little town right now, so. I have met with Ken and Beth about heating grant, and I have to tell you, I have not gotten the real numbers back from the heating supplier. Because I think they're kind of busy installing geothermal for cooling. So once summer reading is, is wrapped up, I'll be able to concentrate more on facilities. So that is all.
But you're nice and cool for the moment.
We're always cool in the center block of the firehouse. The one thing that really does is it keeps us cool.
Well, now that it's weatherized, too.
And now it's weatherized, yes.
Yes, we see that, lovely.
Yes, so.
Great.
Questions for me?
No, thank you, how about thank you?
Thank you.
Yeah, Big Truck Day was great, I had a great time.
Yeah, it was, it's, it's our favorite.
But I didn't get to see the fish hatchery, too many kids in line.
I know, and she was very informative, too.
Yeah.
Yes.
Good night.
Thank you.
You're up, sir.
We had a chance to work a little bit on our to-do list, do a little paving up on Mountain View, the guys got a little training on that, how hot it is. And also, how did roadside change a tire that they blew in the way? A little line striping in all the yards, graded a few roads, and we're working on prepping for paving, as you saw on Hancock Road. Roadside mowing started today, again, as you saw on Hancock Road. And Biden's done a nice job covering at the dump for vacations, and we got one more week to get through. Pulled some glass out of there, again, another roadside training on tire change. Pulled aluminum out of there, about $3,900, just on that. Worked out pretty good. Any questions for me?
Well, we've got John.
Talk about it.
Yeah.
Little roads, yeah. I did meet with John today and showed him the email from Mr. Brasky. John agrees he can get the pavement taken up. The, really, the big concern is making sure we don't hit that septic line.
That's all, yeah.
So that's, that's really a big concern. I will contact Mr. Brasky and respond to his email.
Yeah.
And let him know that that, that will be happening, and so we'll go from there, and sure that'll take care of it, yeah.
If you can pop, can you reuse that pavement, the parts that you pop up, or is it just too old, or?
Graded out.
Yeah.
I could haul it up to Ezra, and they can replane it in when they, when they do replanning up there. That's what we do with a lot of our pavement, leftover pavement when we have some.
Whatever works. Thank you. That sounds like a good plan for that little section.
It does, yeah, I think that's a good solution. All right, thanks, John.
Yeah, appreciate it. We got Greg for show meeting.
Oh, good, yeah, okay. Yeah. It's old business, I mean, if you want to take it now. Well, you want to, Greg, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, there we go.
Now we can hear you, too.
Yeah, welcome, we're gonna take things out of order and talk about show meeting house now. Yeah, welcome, we're gonna take things out of order and talk about Shell Meeting House now. There he is.
You guys saw the email that I sent you from the attorney?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, the attorney's position is that, um, at least Shell Meeting House is a discontinued road.
Yeah.
Greg gave us the letter, we looked at everything, sent it to the attorney. They came back and said they, looking at, um, the laws that were in place in nineteen twenty-eight, um, that, that, uh, that road did not require the abudders to be notified. So that road would be discontinued.
Yeah.
I think with that opinion from the attorney, the staff at the town office can go through the list of those discontinued roads, and look at the dates, and look at the dates that the attorney provided, and try and come up with hopefully a, a solution for several of the other roads. Uh, we'll bring them up to you and let you know, and, and bring up the evidence that we found, and they'll go that way.
Sounds good. Tim, or Greg, when Tim was here, he had asked that we send a letter sort of affirming, uh, what our, our findings and decision were. So we'll get a letter out to you just affirming that it's a discontinued road.
Right, what, uh, what Ken, Ken just stated was, would be perfect, that would be useful. I mean, to us, it feels like Groundhog Day, actually.
Yeah.
The, uh, but, uh, you know, looking back on it, I think to the Wayne Mann days and the Jim Bassett, uh, action to file with the Registry of Deeds, I think he was trying to put, to solidify a starting point for everybody. It's like, this is what it is now, and so if anybody wants to make a change, they've got to go through the process to make a change. Because how many times has this come up, and how much time do you guys spend dealing with this? It would be great, great for everybody to have it resolved in a, in some kind of permanent way.
Agreed. All right, and we'll send a letter to the complainant as well. Yeah, um, perfect, okay. Greg, thank you, anything else?
No, that's fine, uh, actually, very, I don't want to go down too much of a rabbit hole, but there, uh, I think we've talked before about what's the road dossier issue. Because, I mean, uh, I was in the state archives, and actually, I chatted with Calvin a little bit about his research in the state archives, and there's, there's a lot there. But what I was not finding was about the actual formation of the roads, and how, uh, and, and the, the require, the legal requirements for forming a road are even more restrictive than that, those for, uh, discontinuing a road. You know, for example, Shell Meeting House, road was built in order to provide access for the Hills Corner, the uplands, Canterbury, East Canterbury people, to this new church being built at the center of town, at a time when the church was the major social cohesion of, of a town in New England. And, uh, then they started building the church, and a storm came up and blew the building down, and they decided that God said that there shouldn't be a church there. And so maybe God, did God say they shouldn't finish the paperwork for forming the road? It's, you know, it gets, it gets really complicated as you dig back into it. Anyhow, thank you for, uh, addressing it, and, uh, good luck with the, uh, the, there are two other roads that I, I, in my research, uh, I would have some concern about, and that would be Ames Road and Bean Hill Road, which are both discontinued, but the discontinuance crosses town lines. And so with the, the lack of proof of court notification, perhaps those roads are subject to challenge of, of the discontinuance. But that's a, it's a lot of interesting research, but it's a very time-consuming too.
Yeah.
So, okay, thanks.
Thanks, Greg, good night.
Thank you, Greg.
Good night.
Which, which dates would we be looking at from that email? The twenty-eighth, are we set like?
I, I'll have to go back through the email and come up with some dates.
Excuse me.
And I want you guys to all, and give you a list of roads that we're gonna review, and, and see which ones might, might be affected by this, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause to like echo what Greg, Greg said about the layouts of roads.
Yeah. Yeah, we just.
Holy mackerel.
We don't have, I mean, we have no information at all in the town office of how any of the roads are laid out.
I have a bunch of documentation I got from Web with, I don't know if they're the original layout maps of town, but they're literally squiggles with descriptions, and you have to try to overlay them over a scale map to determine what road, what year, and what it was, because they weren't all called the modern names.
Gotcha, right, yeah.
And whether or not.
And the scale was probably all whacked.
Oh, the scale's perfect, no, they, they did a good job of that.
Oh, good.
But it's trying to determine whether I laid out a road so I could go get to Ken's farm, or if the town adopted the road, and who paid who to put the road in, where, it's very tricky to determine who did what and where, and whether or not it's a town road, or it's.
Right.
That's a nightmare.
The official map is in Sam's office, I know, right?
Uh, there is one in Mandy's office.
Yeah.
And in Sam's office.
The one that's above Brian's head there is that.
It was one of the official maps?
Yeah.
I don't know if it's been updated or not, I have to look at it.
And I think, you know, as we go down this road again.
We can.
Yeah.
We should make sure all the maps are the same.
Talk them out, make sure all the maps are updated.
Yeah, because we just had somebody, it might have been Tim, actually, of, of Damian when they came in, was looking at that map saying, uh, there it is.
But, yeah, so.
I think this one was put out in twenty-three by Central New Hampshire Planning.
Brian, can you see a date on that one?
Maybe ninety-one?
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna say, it, it seems like it's a different date.
Yeah, there was one that came out in ninety-one with the original road.
Yeah.
Approach, and then I think this one came out in twenty-three.
Ninety-nine.
Okay, there you go, thank you. That, that would be the only suggestion I would have, is, you know, when we're, when we're done.
Yes.
We'll make sure everything matches and.
Yep.
And if we get it done by the tricentennial, we can sell them too.
Does, does the, is there a certain, for the sake of trying to save time, I've got a lot of documentation, is there like any keywords or certain things that the, the attorneys said, this is all we need? No?
No.
Well?
Tried, tried.
I wish.
Alright.
Yep.
So, um, my final question on that would be, um, since it's, we're going to say yes, it's discontinued, and when they were here, um, Damon and, uh, talked about putting perhaps another gate down the other end because of traffic, so that's not an issue, correct?
That's, they're the property owners, if they want to put a gate up, that's up to them. If they don't want to, they don't have to.
Good, alright.
And I ask Ken this too, and I'll just bring it up because we're here. If the, if we do affirm these roads are discontinued, which it sounds like they might be, do we have any responsibility as a town to notify the landowners on there in regards to their deeds? Because some deeds might not echo the discontinuance, because when they're discontinued, the property moves to the center of the road.
Right.
And I don't know if that puts us in a position where somebody goes to resell, and they're not aware. What, what's our responsibility just to send the landowners, hey, you're discontinued? We're trying to reaffirm this, we went through paperwork and cleaned it up, and this is what we found, here's an FYI, are you sticking in your tax card, or do we just, what's the responsible thing to do? And is there any liability if we don't?
That's a good point, because then we could be sitting here having this discussion, or somebody else will be having this discussion again in ten years about a piece of, of a road that we just thought we settled on.
Oh.
Bad idea.
Hello, hello?
Yeah.
Hello, Greg.
Sorry, uh, that's an interesting point Calvin brought up there, because it depends on how the road was originally formed, this is my understanding. You know, if it was a King's Grant road, then it does not go back to the center of the, the boundaries don't go back to the center of the road. And there are other ways roads are formed, where the land is actually acquired by the town. Uh, in, and so then it's, it's, it doesn't go back to the owner, and that's in those situations. It's a complicated situation.
Yeah.
So no, no one answer that fits all the roads.
Most, most.
And also, uh, state law says you can't address roads as a group, they have to be addressed individually. Each road has to be addressed individually, is my, again, my understand.
Yeah, I, I think it makes a lot of sense, case by case basis, really.
Yeah, most of the town roads were laid out as right-of-way's.
Yeah.
However, like Greg said, there's the King's Grant ones, there are other methods that the town used. So it would be a, really a case by case basis.
But in total, how many roads are we actually talking about that we would have to decide?
Seven.
Oh.
Very, very many, really.
Sounds more doable anyway.
Yeah, they're, they're not, I mean, Wyven Road.
Yeah.
Is a private road.
Yeah.
Ames Road is discontinued, crosses town lines, so that's two. And then you've got.
Bean Hill.
Bean Hill, which crosses town lines, so that's three. That leaves you Shaw, uh, Sunset Hill, Shell Meeting House is discontinued.
Yeah.
Sawyer's Ferry, and Merrill Road, which is up at the orchard, and it's two-hundred-foot trail. So it's, there's really only three or four that would be.
Oh, that sounds doable.
Yeah.
Okay. Have a good time with that.
I've got most, I think I have most of it. I just don't know what they need exactly, and I'm giving the wrong paperwork.
Okay, good, alright.
More to follow, I'm sure. Then, John, thank you.
Alright.
All right. Uh, it's twenty, we still got some time till Luke is due, you want to do some signing?
Yeah.
All right. Why don't we start with an accounts payable manifest in the amount of fifty-two thousand, four hundred seventy-one dollars and thirty-five cents.
I'm sorry, could you say that again, please?
Yep, fifty-two thousand.
Yeah.
Four hundred seventy-one dollars.
Yeah.
Thirty-five cents.
Alright, uh, so moved.
Second, all those in favor?
I. Not that I don't trust you, Cal, but I always go back and check what I've written down versus what shows up in the minutes, and you're spot on every time.
That's because I do it before the meeting.
I know.
So you give away the magic. Really efficient, super organized.
Sir.
Never get anything wrong.
Well.
All right, next is a payroll manifest in the amount of fifty-three thousand, eight hundred eighteen dollars and forty-three cents.
Ooh, so moved.
And second, all those in favor?
I. Alan, you're moving the next one.
Try to stay out of the minutes.
I know. It's not happening. One little move.
Thank you. All right, and last is a welfare manifest in the amount of one thousand, six hundred forty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents.
You got this, Ben.
All right, I'll move it. Second, all those in favor?
Aye. There, see, was that so hard?
I'll get a record.
You do have a record.
All right.
That's the last time we'll do it tonight. Yeah. Okay, yes, sir.
All right, why don't we move on to previous minutes approval?
Oh, yes.
And we'll look first at the, uh, public minutes from the July seventh meeting.
So we've got four suggested changes on page three, on line one eleven. Um, adding to the end of that sentence, they will review and decide at the next meeting.
Okay, yeah, seems accurate.
Um, and then line one sixteen, inserting in twenty-fourteen, just to clarify when exactly that happened. Then on page.
Okay.
Five, uh, inserting between one ninety-nine and two hundred, the select board decided not to pursue this. Just to wrap up that conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A little more clearly.
Okay.
And then on page six, on line two seventy-four, adding at the end, at the Canterbury Elementary School during after-school pickup, just to clarify what the traffic problem is.
Yeah.
And the rest of its typos and grammar.
Yeah. All right, so I'll move the minutes as amended.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, that takes care of that, why don't we move on to the, uh, non-public, also from July the seventh?
Alright, I'm sorry, I did not read these yet.
I gotta cut out those, so you guys can read that.
Thanks for stopping in, Brian.
Good night, Brian, we're still broadcasting, so. Yeah. See ya.
Yeah, I took some liberties with that there.
That's it. That the one beginning in line eighty-three? Uh, line eighty-eight.
Yep.
Just write that down, see? It's extremely appropriate.
Hopeful, hopeful. Sorry, now I have to back up and read what I skipped ahead to. Alright. Don't see anything.
All right, Calvin, anything from you? Nope, okay, I'll move the minutes then.
Uh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Give it to me. Pass them in.
With my, with my okay on it.
All right. That's that. All right, we've still got fifteen minutes before Luke gets here. You want to talk about, uh, the letter, yeah, sure, yeah.
Is that in the, in the folder?
No, I didn't know we were gonna be talking about this, so I just independently wrote this, and I.
Oh, no, this is the Peter Shepherd letter.
Oh, the Peter Shepherd letter?
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, yeah, we were talking about the governor one.
Nope.
Peter Shepherd letter is in new business.
Got it.
Peter Shepherd is off and walks through town with. Peter Shepherd is often walks through town with his very large German shepherd. If you've ever seen him walk in Hackleboro.
With a backpack?
No, he doesn't have a backpack, he's a very tall man, white hair, and he has a very large German shepherd named Billy the Kid. Often walking, that there down off of, um.
That was emailed to us.
But we don't have the, a copy of the email.
The one copy?
Yeah, I'll, so does I finish reading it.
I can pull it from my phone though?
You can pull it.
Oh, is it, when did we get it? Oh, I'll just read it.
Yeah. Yeah, I've seen him many times, um, out walking.
One half mile in all directions from town. Oh, you saw it, Calvin?
Yeah.
Okay, um. What's the downside of doing it?
So, as I said in my email to you guys on the details on what agenda.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Uh, Kimball Pond Road, Center Road, Baptist Road are all state maintained roads.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The town has no authority to set the speed limits on those state maintained roads, it's state. The only road in the center that we have the ability would be Hackleboro. We tried to get the state to lower the speed limit on Kimball Pond Road a few years ago. We had the state reps, we had.
Yeah.
Representatives from the State Highway Department here. And the selectman made the pitch to lower the speed limit. And the state said, unless you have some kind of data that shows there's accidents or you catch people speeding. That, that, and it's a problem, then they didn't feel it was needed to lower the speed limit. Police department had a recording device that measured the speed on Kimball Pond Road. And there was. A small percentage of the cars traveling that road that, that went above the speed limit, posted speed limit. In fact, most of them went below the posted speed limit. So the state felt that they were not going to reduce the speed limit. So, I mean, you can talk to the state. We could have Mr. Shepherd write a letter similar to this to the state reps and the DOT. But as a town, we don't have the authority to reduce.
And how? The curious part of it too is I think a lot of people don't necessarily look at the speed limit when they're traveling on those roads. They kind of go what, what's a comfortable speed?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, Kimball Pond is currently.
Forty.
Forty.
Turns to thirty right after Mill Road.
Right, yeah, coming down.
Yep.
So if you reduced it another ten miles an hour on that one section or twenty miles. How, how would we know if people were actually doing that?
We would ask the police department to.
Sit there for a while.
Either. Either take radar there for a while or. As before, uh, the police department had borrowed a recording device, but they just, it's a black box and hangs on a utility pole.
Oh, it's not the little thing that goes across the road that people?
Nope, 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 it's a, it's a radar units, it's a little, little black box, it's a, that's attached to a utility pole. With some band clamps and they use it and then download the data. And it tells them time of day, speed. Um, it does, it's not a camera, it's just records the car and how fast they're going. They had borrowed that and put it on a shake a road and put it on a couple other roads that we were having some problems with and, and found some. Spots where the police, uh, increased their enforcement.
So is Old Tilton a state road?
Old Tilton Road is not a state road, it's a town road, so you could do something with Old Tilton.
In Hackleboro.
Hackleboro's posted thirty.
It posted the thirty.
Yeah, but have you?
Oh, I'd do twenty-seven, alright, people don't like driving behind me.
If you, if you sit in, in, um, well, Haus, further up the road and you hear the traffic coming by, they come, they. They do speed up though, so.
Yeah, it would, and again, depending on where you want to.
Yeah.
Like on Hackleboro Road, if you want to decide that, um, further up the hill, um, somewhere, reduce it there. Same thing with Tilton, maybe down on the corner or something, I don't know, it's up to, up to you guys where you felt you wanted to reduce it.
Hackleboro's tight by the Orchard, people fly through that corner.
Well, it's tight, but, and a lot, and a lot of people actually walk and ride their bikes on it, but a lot of people pick up speed going to get up that hill, up to pass the basset. So, and it gets tight, that's where we lost. This, a couple of months ago, somebody went around the corner and went over the.
Yep. Yep. Boom.
And banked it, so, so those two roads that will have a lot of walkers. Um, they do have fast traffic, um, there's something we could do about those two roads.
Well, how come they haven't, and I, I don't know the rules for this, but like where, uh, Hackleboro turns to Sunset Hill, there's a paved patch there. And that hasn't really been, there's potholes in and out, people fly through that coming up the hill and it's not really.
That was paved because there was multiple washouts there several years ago, so they paved that section.
Yeah. Like really big washouts, yeah.
Yeah, some fairly, fairly significant washouts, so they paved it, which improved it a lot. You know, I mean, as far as the speed, I don't know, you know, you'd have to talk to, we have the police.
It just gets really narrow there on a people flying up it.
Sure. And you can have the police, we can ask the police to do enforcement in places that we feel there's issues, you know, so.
Would it, would it be worth it to see if we could, um, borrow the box again and actually check the speeds on both, the two roads that we have any control over? Hackleboro and, and Old Tilton?
Yep.
And, and let Peter know that we're doing that?
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Hello? Just let me add the, uh, uh, Central Regional Planning Commission. Traffic. Many of their. Recording sites include speed, the new technology includes speed. And so you could get caught.
Okay, you were, you were broken up, Greg, I, I think you said.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, my internet is iffy here. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay, uh. The New Hampshire Municipal Association's speed studies that we, uh, do every year on multiple locations. Many of those locations are now also showing speed. Because the new, the new recording devices show speed.
Okay, understood.
So it would give you more, more information without having to have set up new, uh, new, uh, testing.
Okay, makes sense, thanks, Greg.
I was actually gonna ask about that because we designated the roads that we wanted to check this year, but did we have only a certain number that we could?
Five, five, yeah.
So I don't think the two roads that we're talking about were part of that.
Yeah, I don't think so, I'll, I'll look at the list and see, but, but, uh.
I mean, if we could add two more, that would be great, but.
Yep, yep.
Um, if they're already out and doing it, why, why were we limited to five or is that just what the budget would allow?
That's what they, it's every year they are limited to five.
We asked.
I suppose it never hurts to ask, but.
If you don't ask, you don't get.
Right.
So we've, we've had a complaint and we would like to check and before we, you know, go through the blah, blah, blah.
Okay, okay, yep.
Thank you. I'll draft a letter if you like. I don't wanna have it to your to-do list. And then, um, should we, um, how should we, uh, answer Mr. Shepherd at the, just, uh. You know, we're working on it those, and, and everything you just told us, the state wasn't interested, this is what you could do and this is what we're, we're going to do?
I would answer, just say that the. Kimball Pond Road, Baptist and Center are state, state controlled.
Yeah.
So we don't have any input on that, he can contact state reps or do it, DOT if he wants.
Yeah.
Uh, and we're looking to at least Old Tilton Road, Hackleboro.
Okay. That would, I think that would be good then, and everybody's got a little something to do.
Yeah.
It's simply sympathetic to anybody that's walked on, yeah, some of these roads.
Oh, Hackleboro's crazy.
Yeah.
Take your life in your hands.
Kimball Pond without shoulders.
Pardon?
Maybe draft twenty-seven.
Alright. Anything further on that?
Uh, I don't think so, thank you.
Alright, Luke, welcome.
Hi.
Why don't you have a seat?
Thanks.
Good to see you.
Yeah.
Hello?
Brought some, I didn't know how many people were here, I brought some. Highlighted, uh. Uh, just about rail trails in, uh, general.
Okay, that's Luke.
I. Thank you. I need one for speaking.
I wanted to give you this too. I'll talk, when we talk about footbridge, I'll give you a talk about that.
And then this is just, if anybody is really passionate about it, it's like more information.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, so we live down there on, uh, the end of West Road in Canterbury and on the other side of the tracks. And, um. The bridge got taken down, I, I don't know, was it ten years ago or something?
Yeah.
Car bridge across.
It's ten years ago.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. And, um, it made sense, it was decrepit and, uh, I'm not sure exactly the reasons. It was taken down as opposed to repaired, I, I think it had to do with. It was, it needed to be a bu- budget pass on both, both towns. Anyway, it's neither here nor there, um, the river's there and, uh, there's people that still use it. There's a park on the other side of the river and there's a, a developing rail trail on the other side of the river. Which, um, currently, I think it runs from approximately the parking lot at Exit Seventeen up to Lebanon. Uh, I think there's plans within the next few years to go down into Concord from, from that location. And, um, I just thought it would be great for Canterbury to tie into the rail trail for people, um, that cycle. Or walk, um, to not have to go down to Exit Seventeen, um, and, and cross the bridge, which is gonna be dangerous. And to tie into this like, I don't, I don't, I don't know exactly, but sixty miles I would guess and, and, and go right into, you know, downtown Concord and. Have the availability to shop or cultural or restaurants and, um, to not have to drive a car everywhere. I think there, uh, so in many communities, I mean, of course, more so in like vacation areas. But in many communities, the rail trail does provide, um, for economic growth and there, there is an economic factor to improving, um, access to, to rail trails for businesses. Camping and, like, I, I think of Cape Cod, of course, it's, it's hard to compare, you know, central New Hampshire to Cape Cod, but, you know, there's cafes and ice cream parlors and, and, um. Bed and breakfasts that have developed all up and down along, um, rail trails throughout the country and I think it's, um. You know, it's still a growing movement, I, there was money, um, with the, uh. Inflation Reduction Act for, for rail trails, uh, I, I'm assuming that that's reduced, if not abolished, um, completely. But, um, anyway, I just thought to start the conversation and throw my hat in the ring as somebody who supports it and to try to find out how I could push it forward or. Just continue to explore it. I did call Boscombe, they happen to be developing on the other side of the, um.
Yeah, we're.
Um, I think.
That's what this is.
Okay, yeah, Ken sent me that, and then a pavilion, they have parks there, they already have like basketball courts, there's tennis courts. Baseball fields, um, they're looking to expand pavilion with, uh, grilling access. So like. On that end, and I don't, I don't know if Boscombe has like beaches per se on their side of the river, I, I, I really don't know, but I don't know why. They don't, they don't, right, so like, it could be like a real mutual beneficial, um. Of course. You know, we're down there, so we would benefit, but also it would be a detriment to us, you know, it, it would be kind of both, like, we're, we're at the end of a dead end road, so like, it's quiet and that's nice, but at the same time. Um, I, I wouldn't want, honestly, I think a car bridge would be difficult for us, uh, the way we kind of manage the farm and, and stuff, but I, I think a footbridge could be like a benefit for, for everybody, so.
A foot, foot and bike bridge.
A foot and bike bridge, yeah, yeah. And then, so, I spend, whenever I get free time, I do go up to the White Mountains and, you know, it just seems like they throw up these relatively inexpensive. Cable bridges that. I'm sure they're more expensive than I'm thinking, but, but they look relatively inexpensive and they swing and they, they have liability there too, you know, it's not like there's no liability, so. I, I just thought there might be some way to do it inexpensively also that maybe, maybe people have to walk their bridge, their bike over and it's not necessarily like a full on bike bridge, but.
Um, what did you speak with in Boscombe when you called?
I forget, there's, there's a select woman over there that is very, very active in Lower Cary, okay.
Yeah.
In, in the project, uh, so I'm not sure who that was, but, uh, I, I spoke to someone else in the office, they were gonna pass the message on and I haven't heard.
Okay.
Yeah, that, I think, this may be, uh, Katie Phelps is the town administrator, that may be why she sent this to us. Um, it's just a letter, um, it's an update from, that they sent out to their residents on, on that project there, they're spending. Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, to do upgrades to that area, you know, for the park and do a pavilion and, and things like that, so.
Is that in conjunction to view of like?
Right across the river.
It's literally right across the river.
I've never been down past the farm, so.
Alright, if you go to the farm, it dead ends and you can see the, well, it took the bridge abutment, it's out, right?
So.
No, the abutments are still, they're still there, yeah.
Back when the, when the bridge was, was, uh, being taken down, the state historic and national historic preservation, uh. Outfits, uh, required the towns to put up some kind of historical marker. And if you go down at the end in Canterbury, there's a sign up there that talks and gives the history of the bridge. And then on the Boscombe side, that was part of, their, their historical project was to develop this pavilion and put some signage and everything. And they're, they're getting to do that now, they finally raised their money.
I see.
Um, it wasn't, the requirement wasn't anything particular, they just said that, the, the requirement was you had to put something there. So we got a sign made up and, and put it up down there and that met the, the requirements and, and they said, yeah, that's fine. The, the bridge was taken down, it was closed in nineteen sixty-two to traffic, car traffic. So it wasn't taken down until two thousand fifteen. And, um, the bridge was. When they, when they took it down, they cut it in half, they pulled half it over to Canterbury and half it over to Boscombe. And the company that did it had to weld in a whole bunch of supports, so it didn't fall apart when they pulled it off, the abutment, because it was such bad shape. It was, uh. In fact, up at the highway fire, but they have a bolt, I think it was like an inch or so at the base of the, the shank of the head. And where it went, actually went through the steel, it was about the size of a pencil, so there was, there's nothing left of the, of their infrastructure. And I got pictures of it up at the town office when, when, when we were taking it down. The, the steel girders were Swiss cheese, you could look right through them all.
So what it, what it needed.
It, and, and that's what they had engineers look at it to see, both towns have been contributing money to a capital reserve account. To determine whether they could either take it down or rehab it or whatever, and it just was no, no chance of rehabbing it at all, so.
What, you was that taken down, Ken, finally?
Two thousand fifteen.
Yeah.
The Soulville Club wanted to know if they could try and rebuild it and put something there for the Soulville Trail. And that, they couldn't even use it for that, they, the engineers said, no, you, you have to take it down, it's just not safe.
Yeah.
And I know, Luke, I, 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 I understand, you know, Burlington to Vermont has a real nice rail trail they developed up there. You can go up and, and ride your bike or walk all the way up to, almost to the New York, where the ferry is to go to New York. Um, and it's, it is really nice, um, so. I don't know what the, who you would have to talk to about getting a, a bridge across there.
But because.
Obviously, the towns would have to get together.
Yeah.
Because half it's in Canterbury and half it's in Boscombe, I don't know what the state involvement would be.
Yeah.
Well, and the other thing is, is if you read, um, the letter that, that came from, from Boscombe, I mean, this. Well, and the other thing is, is if you read, um, the letter that, that came from, from Boscombe, I mean, this was a huge project. They had a big committee, they did all this fundraising, it's no small amount of money, they did grants, they did, they have the, an engineering firm. And anything we did on our side, if it's going across, would have to hook in with what they've already planned. And I think they've got a scenic overlook planned for the abutment that's coming out on their side, so, I mean, if it had to. If anything, we wanted to hook into that, you know, you'd need to plan for that now, I would think. And they're, they're set to go, so I don't know how timing wise it would even work. But it would, it would have to, it would have to fit in with what they're already doing. Um, I mean, if we started a, a committee, if we, if we started a committee now and started fundraising, I mean, we could be a couple of years from trying to get something done, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, I think they're like halfway to their goal or something.
They're starting building, uh, shortly, shortly?
No, I think, yeah, I think they're considerably more than halfway, I think they're almost there.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. They, they have, they have four hundred thousand dollars of the estimated quarter fifty for the total project.
Yeah, like Ben said.
And the, and the list of.
Yeah.
I mean, at the second page, it, it gives the list of people that are on that committee, and Lori Carey is one of them. That might be a contact person for you to at least contact her, and I have her contact information if you need it.
Yeah, okay, I'm also, I, I know, um, John Porter too.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I just, at least. Put the idea forth and see what they say.
Yeah.
If they say, well, we're all set.
You're, you're not hooking into our, our pavilion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think that might be a good place to start, is talk to the committee that's already.
So on that end, nothing can be done on Canterbury's end?
Well, I mean, if, if there was money raised and the town said, yeah, let's go ahead and do it, then Canterbury can do it. But we could only get halfway to the, to the middle of the river and then Boscombe would have to take.
Oh, right, 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 I, I mean, I was just wondering if there's like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, well, the, the problem, as always, is the cost.
Yeah.
So, you know.
Okay.
There was, uh, there was a.
So it's, stuff like this happen like from independent initiative, like I, I of course can't front the project.
So there was a.
No.
In, in Concord, there was a, uh, bridge, a Snowville, the Snowville Club, um, purchased a Bailey Bridge. Which is an older military style, a surplus, and they put it across the Kentucky River for a snowmobile trail. I don't know, I don't know enough, you'd have to get an engineer involved and see what the span is and what, what you need for some kind of bridge for a footbridge and, and everything that.
Is it Bailey Bridge the kind that's like floating on the water as opposed to over?
No, 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 it goes over the abutments.
Right.
It's a steel bridge, basically, it's, it's self-supporting and then they just pushed it across the river. And they had a company came in that does this all the time, and they did it, but, but they were able to get it, it was a military surplus bridge, so.
I mean, it would be a, it, it's not that it's not a cool idea, I mean, I think it would be beautiful, unfortunately, it seems like the timing would have been, if we could have done it with Boscombe.
Yeah.
At the same, at the same time, they're starting site work and construction spring of twenty twenty-six, so they're all set to go. Uh, so they've got all their engineering done, but that doesn't mean, um.
I, I would, I would pitch the idea to them and see what they say.
Yeah, so when I go on the Canterbury side. There's nothing to be done?
Well, I mean, it's just, it, yeah.
I think Boscombe would have to be receptive that much because they're already in motion.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah.
Yeah, the first step, I would think, is a meeting of minds.
Okay.
If, if they're not on board with this, then we can't.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and I wouldn't say there's nothing that can be done, it's just, one, who will do it? And two, where do you start get, getting money to do it? So, it would.
So they would have to receive, cause they would have to receive the other half of the bridge, is what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah. Well, would they have to build the other half of the bridge? Do they have to build from their side to the middle and we build to them, or do we build all the way and they just have to accept?
Well. It would be, it would. Just like the, the removal of the old bridge, it was a, uh, combined effort by both towns, it was voted on by both towns.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it was voted, uh, voted on to start a capital reserve account by both towns, then it was voted on to finally, when we had the funding, to take it down. Um, myself and the town administrator at the time in Boscombe worked together with the engineering firms. And, uh, and then worked together with the company to, to take it down, so it was a combined effort, so.
Yeah, yeah.
It would be, my guess, it would be a combined effort similar to that to, to work up something, yeah.
And at the moment, it seems like it's, you know, it seems, um, Canterbury would like more to go over to Boscombe. Since they're building all that stuff there and hooking onto the rail trail, then Boscombe would wanna come over to Canterbury, but.
Well, the beach is quite, quite a.
But the beach might, might be the draw, I think it'd be worth talking to them because they might say, heck yes, that's, that's a, it's really interesting and let's work on it.
Okay, so I'll start there.
Yeah.
Especially when you take into account Exit Eighteen's potential development, Exit Seventeen's development.
Yeah.
In the future, it could, it could link up and be, you know, an economic benefit to that area. I don't know where the rail, rail trail goes north of Canterbury, I don't know if it connects to Franklin, Tilton, any of that. But it could potentially be the first step in opening up that whole corridor.
So the, the railroad, um, from, uh, Intervale Road, north, that is a snowmobile trail. When there's enough snow in the winter.
Okay.
The snowmobiles were allowed to use that railroad up to Tilton. Um, I don't know if that's still, if they still do that or not. But at, at one time, a, a few years ago, that was a, a snowmobile trail.
Hmm.
So on the Canterbury side, you could access that railroad, uh, track and drive up to Tilton on a snowmobile. But you couldn't go south of there, like down into Concord.
And in the summer, is it passable enough or like a dirt bike?
Uh, no, it's a rail, there's, there's rails.
It's got the, the, the rails and the, yeah.
There's rails, yeah, and, and they don't allow summer, cause they, they used to run trains up through there.
Hmm.
Uh, but, but I don't know what the status that is, uh.
Yeah, and I would think the other consideration would be parking on the Canterbury side.
Yeah.
A new project of probably have to meet handicapped accessible requirements, so, you know, those are all things to consider.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'll, um, see what I can drum up on the Boscombe side.
Yeah, but it's an interesting project, it's a, it's a great idea.
See if they're receptive, then.
Come back to them, let's talk.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Luke.
Well, thanks for the time you've invested so far.
Can we keep this thing?
Well, it's really just a dollar and dreams, just.
You never know.
Can we keep this thing?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks, Luke.
Take care.
Take care. Alright.
See some of the beautiful bridges they build, you know, you look at the, the spans across the canyons and things, I wouldn't walk over any of them, some of the ones in, in Europe or in Asia, but they're beautiful.
Yeah.
How wide is the river there, a couple hundred feet?
Well, it's.
Yeah, anyway.
It's, yeah, it's.
Yeah.
All of that, it might be more even. I can't remember what the total length of that span was when it was on. It was probably in the area of two fifty, yeah.
Like football field.
Yeah.
It, it could be a really cool project.
Oh, yeah.
But cost wise and it's a lot of money and a big commitment.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, and it, as you say, parking, it would, all the parking would be right across from the new house that they just bought, that, that's right at the very butt end of the road.
Mm-hmm.
So that's the only place for parking.
Yeah.
And I don't even know what that does for, um, for the conservation easement. That would all have to be figured out too.
Yes, it would, I think, yeah.
Okay. Well, to be continued, cool idea as it is.
Lots to talk about.
Yeah. Yeah. Alright, Ken, uh, you wanna go to land use, or say?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, so. I think I sent you an email, the.
Yep.
Government signed a hundred and something bills and vetoed a few more. The ones that you were more concerned with were the land use ones, uh, House Bill five seventy-seven. That, uh, says all ADUs, such as drilling units attached or detached are allowed by right. There's no lot size restriction on detached, um, and you can't require a conditional use or special exception for, uh.
Hmm.
Of detached or, uh, an ADU.
And that's the one that just passed?
That just passed, and that was, the government signed it on the fifteenth of the month, but it was retroactive to the first. So, I.
So the matter that's before the planning board right now?
So I sent, uh, that, I, I, uh, sent an email to NHMA Legal Inquiries.
Yeah.
And asked them, gave them the details of that, said that the, we had an application, the planning board heard it. Sent the applicant back, they wanted more information. Uh, I asked if that was a moot point at this time, they said, yes. Uh, I forwarded it to the planning board chair and he said, no. So, I, I know, he said he was gonna try and take it up at the planning board meeting tomorrow night, I'm not sure when. I think they have a very full agenda, and, um, I guess. My concern is that, that the applicant is aware of the change in the law, that, from legal opinion, that they only need a building permit. They do not need anything else, they need to comply with state law as far as septic and, and that, but, and setbacks and those type things, but. Uh, they do not need a conditional use permit, which is done by the planning board, so I'm not sure what the planning board has. They feel that they may want to look at.
But if the bill, if, if the bill says what it says and legal weighs in that it's not a problem, what power does our planning board have to say?
I don't, I don't know.
We wanna do something different?
I don't know.
Does it change, oop, sorry.
Oh, sorry, how do we find that out? I mean, who's, who's on first in, in that case?
Well, the meeting's tomorrow night and he said he was gonna bring it up.
Alright.
So, I don't, I mean, Scott will be there as the second's rep.
Should we invite the applicant?
Well, that's, so, here's the issue, so tomorrow night we're doing, you know, the.
The sidewalk and?
Sidewalk, followed by the public hearing, followed by another public hearing. Um, and, and potentially followed by the, um, solid waste.
Mm-hmm.
Along with, you know, whatever else comes up, including probably this discussion, so.
But, uh, you know, what point do we, uh, make a, a good application?
I, I guess. I guess if, if the applicant came into the town office on Wednesday and said, I want a building permit, I'm not sure how I respond. I guess at this point, I would say, okay, from legal, there's your building permit application and fill it out. And when the, we'll have the building inspector review it and do that. I don't know whether the staff at the town office has the authority to say, no, the planning board's gonna review it and get back to you.
Does that change the, does the town still have control over the size of ADUs?
Yes, well.
So for instance, Scott's town's eight hundred square feet.
The, well, it said.
And we're a thousand.
No, it, it can't.
We're a thousand, well, we're a thousand, yeah.
It can't, right, it can't be anything, uh, less than a thousand square feet. That is in the law also, that's an ADU law.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
But it doesn't say, it does say that the town has the authority to, like setbacks and septic and those types of things. But, but it doesn't say, you know.
I wasn't sure if it just opened the door for bigger ADUs, more of them by, you know, I just.
I would say more of them, yes, um, or at least.
It's certainly easier, yeah.
I guess. I, I don't know, more of them, it, it, it's less control over.
Yeah.
How many there are or, or what, what they are.
But wasn't there a bill saying you could have an, an attached and detached, two-on-one property?
Yes, that didn't go through.
Okay.
That did not go through.
Just curious, if that had gone through, would it, could you still get a thousand feet on and a thousand feet off, that would triple the size of houses.
Right, right.
Sure. Did, um, when it says, um. Wait, excuse me, my question just fell out of my head, continue. I'll, I'll gather my thoughts.
Well, I guess tomorrow night, I'll certainly bring that, I, I, I would ask that, that, that you bring this up to them. I know it's gonna be a long meeting and I don't know how you're gonna get, how, how this is gonna get discussed.
Yeah.
But I would ask if there's any way possible that it get taken care of.
Yeah.
As soon as possible, so if the applicant becomes aware of this, they come in or anybody else comes in, that, that staff at the town office has the direction to go, yeah.
Well, it would seem that, you know, as, as, since your, um, agenda has discretion, like any of them does.
Hmm.
You know, move this, which should be a pretty short discussion, up.
I, I would think it would be.
And anything like the, the, um, the review of chapter nine is something that, since it's not critical.
Right.
When it happens, and is going to be long, could, could move further up.
Well, in the agenda that got set out, it, it, there was something in there, if it's before nine o'clock. Um, we can discuss the solid waste chapter, if it's after nine, we'll, then we'll just put it off.
Okay.
So, and I think that's, that's sensible. Um. There were a couple more that, that could be a concern to us. Um, SB two eighty-four, um, that you can only require one parking area per unit. So.
Really?
If, if, uh.
Area or spot?
Spot.
Because if you have a parking area, you could.
One parking spot per unit.
Huh.
Yes, you can't require more than one parking spot per unit. Um, there was one that, that was, there was some turnover, but it really doesn't apply to us. Uh, HB six thirty-one allows multifamily or mixed use by right in commercial zones. Um. But that only applies to urban areas, so that does not apply to Canterbury.
Okay.
Um, NHMA sent out, uh, a house tour.
Yeah.
Uh, whatever on the, you know, rise laws, so that is, uh, I think it's a good document.
Yeah.
Um.
I think they sent it out to everyone, I think I got it twice, actually.
Yeah.
Is there an established percentage of residential in a, so if it's a commercial zone? Do they, and you're allowed mixed use, do they say only fifty percent can be residential? I know it doesn't apply to us, but.
I, I, I read it, it just said, when it said urban areas, I stopped reading.
Okay.
Sorry.
I would just be curious to see how they, how they deal with that.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah.
Um. Alright, so you'll try and get our planning board, I want the planning board, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Do you want to talk about the Senate bill and the email that Cal drafted?
Yep, like, yeah, and I know Cal, this is not what you're expecting, but.
Did you ju, if you just emailed it to us, we can, we can read, we can all read it, or you could just read it to us.
Uh, how about I, how about I forward it to everybody here?
So, yeah.
Because it was very tailored to myself.
Yeah.
Um. So. Alright, I just forwarded it, so you should all have it.
Oh.
Yeah.
I heard something, it must have just come.
Good point.
Yes. So I could change some of the examples to make it more generic.
Yeah, I'm just thinking like.
Yeah.
Town meeting where each of us, you know, typically speaks on a, a particular warrant article, that's a very good point right there.
Yeah.
Very good point, I think we'd have to stop it.
You would, yeah, I, well, to be safe.
Yeah.
I mean, you could still do it, but somebody might cry foul, right? Um.
But is it a, to explain the context of the warrant?
That is the, 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 the law is vague enough that it does not, um, allow. Well, electioneering and it would be in the, the judge, if, if somebody brought lawsuit, it would be up to the court to determine whether that was permanent or not.
Hell, yes, I wanna, I mean, how would you ever have a, a reasonable public discourse about anything?
That's the question, that's the question, right.
Well, and, and if I remember though, it is a misdemeanor.
It is a misdemeanor, so.
Yes.
Yeah, so you could actually, you got a criminal record and.
It's a law, right, it's a law just a violation, it's a misdemeanor.
Okay, so, um, yes, let's sign this, please, and, um. I mean, would, you could send this one by, uh, from you personally as well. I mean, would you could send this one by uh from you personally as well, correct, yeah, oh, you already sent it, okay.
I already sent it, I didn't want to talk about this.
Okay.
So we could, we could edit this, um. Just thinking in in the in the essence of time.
Yeah.
We could edit it and you could.
If we vote now tonight that we are going to sign this and just come in and see the edited version and.
I think that's all you would have to do.
Yeah, of course.
You'd have to come in individually, review it and determine whether you're agreement of it and.
Sign it.
If there's edits to be made or anything like that, then we would have to meet again. Um but if you're all okay with it individually as written, then as as long as there's no edits, then we could, we could probably.
I mean, I'm perfectly okay with this as written and if it's, if the language is just changed, reflect the voice of the board of the of the board.
We can make it generic with the board aside, yeah.
I'm I'm perfectly okay with that, I.
And that last paragraph?
What was the last paragraph?
The last bullet point?
Oh, wait, there.
Yeah, that one was, I don't know how much I wanna change that or.
Oh, I didn't read that far, thank you Calvin.
It was a great paragraph.
Yeah, it is great, um maybe uh maybe not. Maybe not from us.
Right.
But from you, absolutely.
So maybe remove the last bullet point.
Yep.
And then change the rest of the language to be the collective select board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can change the two examples I did of the warrant articles I spoke to to just being. Every single year you explain every single warrant article and you wouldn't be able to do that.
Yep. Exactly.
So, uh huh, yeah. Our goal is to have an informed.
Who put that bill through?
I I don't know who the sponsor was.
Oh, I think it was one of ours, one of our reps.
Uh was it, yes, Ken Bellis.
It was SB two thirteen?
Yeah, SB two thirteen.
Uh. I think I saw, or I might be getting.
Sponsor, Senator James Gray, Republican. Yeah, it was a Senate bill, not a House bill, so.
Oh, okay, so we're.
Yeah, it's like just one sponsor.
Did anything happen with House Bill eighty-four?
It was.
That was the essentially revamping of all the zoning, changing frontages, allowed um. It would sense to change.
Uh, it did.
It did, gets, okay, good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just looked at the ones that NHMA put out that affect land use, I didn't go back and review.
Cause that was the big one at the whole state, it was pretty, I think.
Yeah, James Gray, is that in the public?
Yes.
Well, thank you, Cal, this is a well-written letter and thanks for um bringing this to our attention because, yeah, that would make things ridiculously hard. If you can't explain to your voting public why.
Which puts the onus on everybody to do all the legwork to inform themselves.
Which won't happen.
No, I mean, it's very difficult to get enough information as it is when you're putting out what we can put out.
Yeah.
But I guess the other, the other thing to consider is what the candidates might be coming.
Dead.
You know, could you? Could you be asked to give your opinion about a whatever town project and give it and then be accused of electioneering?
Uh yeah, well, if you're a sit, if you're already sitting, running for reelection. Yeah, that wouldn't be good.
Things to consider, I know.
So I'll make the edits uh tomorrow morning and text you when it's ready for signing.
Perfect, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Cal.
Alright. Town hall electrical?
Yeah, uh I met with the electrician last week, I kind of let you guys know.
Yeah.
He's gonna put in two twenty amp circuits with outlets uh on the outside of the building. Um he also looked at, we had a request from the Historical Society to potentially put a line in power to the Hauser Museum. Instead of having an electrical uh meter on the side of the building. He looked at that and he gave me an estimate for that, I'll forward that over to the historical. Um. So I think that's it for the town hall.
What was the, the ended up to be the cost for putting the uh circuits outside? Well, oh.
Let me check, let me just check, I think it was like nine thousand dollars.
What, really?
It's a.
Conduit must be expensive.
Uh six thousand. Six thousand go from the town hall to the to the Hauser Museum. Um it's, it's uh.
Oh, okay, that's.
It's one hundred and fifty, one hundred and twenty-five feet or something like that. Um so we're gonna have to buy con, right, the cost, the cost is the material. So you have to buy conduit and wire.
Yeah.
And you're looking at probably a fifty amp circuit, so it's gonna be a pretty heavy duty.
Too odd.
Is it worth it just to get the meter off the side of the building?
Well, I'd have to look, that's, that's the thing, we'd have to look at it and see what the payback is.
What's the payback? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But that's, that's, you know, we get. I don't know, it's sixty bucks a month or fifty bucks a month um for that building. Um so we'd have to look at it and see what the payback is.
We pay sixty bucks a month for that building?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's what it is, I have to look at the electricals at this point.
Okay, yeah, I think that would be worth it.
But I'll I'll get that information and send it out.
Um how much was it to put the two sockets on the outside of the town hall?
He didn't say, I just said.
Oh, okay, okay.
I just, I said, I said.
When you said nine thousand, I was like, it can't be that much to put two sockets, okay.
No, 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 I just said, do that.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
It'll all be a few.
The farmer's market appreciates that, that would be much helpful and the, for the fair, it will be very helpful for uh having people going down to the base zone and stuff, so that would be great.
Town Halloween.
Town Halloween also.
Right, all that stuff, it it really was a, a great idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, great. Okay.
Alright.
Yay.
Janitor vacancy.
Yep, uh let you know, uh Rob Apprevy, a long time janitor for the town buildings, uh had to get done because of a health issue. I got a letter from her today and this is addressed to everybody and says, I want to thank all of our town employees and departments for always treating me so well over the years. This includes all of our select people and various board members. Feels good to know I leave my employment with a good feeling in my soul. I leave this job by no other reason than I am just not able to continue due to my health, I wish you all good things. I remember my years fondly, thank you for all, thank you all for being the kind and wonderful people you are, so I'm.
Thank you, Ron.
Can we send Robin a letter of apology?
I will, I figured I would be, yeah, I think that, that would be, yeah.
Yes. Can we, can we print it out and sign it?
Of course.
Thank you, cause that would be pretty and nice and she would appreciate that, I think.
Yes, yeah. Yes, I can send it to you.
Okay.
Alright, anything else before we go onto old business?
I do have some other new business. Um I am gonna attend um a job fair at unemployment or employment security. Um they. Uh this is about the highway department vacancy we have. Um they have job fairs every Thursday, um so I'm gonna go there this week from nine eleven. They'll hand out flyers and my card and hopefully we'll get somebody that that might be able to work for us.
For a highway?
For highway, yeah.
Can we hand out ones for a janitor too? Or is it just highway?
Uh this is just highway.
Okay, just checking.
I didn't do anything, I figured I'd do one at a time.
Yeah.
And I'll let people know, if people talk to me, I'll talk to them about the potential for position at the transfer station in January. Because Andrea has made it clear that he he feels he's gonna be done the end of the year.
Okay.
Oh, okay, well, I would, I would make a pitch for that too.
Do we have a stopgap for the the custodial services right now?
No, well, yes, the staff.
We clean it ourselves?
Yeah.
The staff, the staff at the building up at the municipal building, town office is taking care of it and will monitor this building in the town hall.
Could we reach out to any of the local clean, there's a ton of cleaning companies that solicit on the the Facebook page.
Yeah, I mean, our our office buildings and the municipal building, I think we're good on.
Okay.
I already have two applications, so we posted it and I have two applications.
Okay, good.
Um so uh I I don't think, I think the the biggest thing would be make sure after the fair that this building and the town hall are squared away. And uh you know, we'll, we'll, the staff will take care of that.
Is this building used anymore during the fair? It used to have the book sale in it, but is it just open for bathrooms? We don't have the book sale in it, no.
Yeah, 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 I guess we don't use it anymore, so, yeah, so it would just be the town hall.
Okay. Town hall, yeah.
And I think I'll talk to Rachel after the book thing is done, we'll go over there and take a walk through and make sure that everything's all taken care of.
Yeah.
Usually isn't a problem, um but but just to make sure, so. Um let's see, I think that's it.
Can we um, can we back up for half a second, just while we're on the town hall and the and the fair?
Yep.
Are the bathrooms open, do they keep that back hall closed during the fair, is it only available for the book sale people or are the crowds using those bathrooms? Cause that would be a huge.
I don't know.
What's our people?
I think anyone can use the bathroom.
Yeah, I don't think they close them off.
Uh seems like we should, because we have all the porta potties and there's ones right outside and if, it just seems like it would be one, a big. Um bump to the septic and to the cleaning of the building if that back hallway is open for people to use.
I don't think you can restrict it though, cause that's a fire exit.
Well, you can close the door and just put a sign on, say, fire exit only.
On the bathroom, yeah.
No, on the door, the door to the hall.
You could, you could.
Close that back hallway.
I mean, you could put a sign on the door, staff only at the fair.
Yeah.
Just on the bathroom door?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's tricky.
Couldn't you lock them from the inside, don't they got the the old push button?
Oh, but then how do you get back in?
Yeah. I think you could just put.
You just do your right.
Save it later.
I think you could just have a sign on them.
I'm not sure I ever thought about it, but I don't.
Public, public please use porta potties, our septic system can't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, you know, something like that, we'll make up something, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know, but I've ever noticed whether they were opening.
I didn't, I didn't either, I only just thought about it now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
With, especially with septic pumps failing and and lack of janitors.
Yeah. Um the only other new business I have, and I should have brought this up with John, is here, the Classics Road Inspection is in your folder.
Oh, okay.
Um there's one road that he has.
Oh, this is in here.
There's some, some things that need attention here, one road, Flag Road, says passable, needs to crush bank on gravel, added rocks. We do not have a road improvement plan signed for that, we only have a waiver, so we can't hold them responsible um for that.
Okay, which road again?
Flag Road, there's one house on it.
Yep, yeah. Yeah.
Um and then on Welch Road, says the plow truck is parked in the turnaround. And the turnaround was, we we, when we went, when they put the extended that and put the house in down there. We asked for an easement for for a turnaround, so the fire trucks could could turn around there.
Yeah.
Um and and John noted this is a fall one, that the plow truck was parked there. So I'm gonna send him a letter and ask him to to not leave the truck turned around there, parked in there so they could, the fire trucks could turn around if they had to.
Yeah.
So what do we do with a road such as Flag Road in this case?
There's nothing we can do about Flag Road.
And the owner themselves, are as responsible, the person who's on there, one house? What?
Again, it's it's, we don't have a road improvement plan uh signed by them when we did the waiver. That was before we did the waiver, the road improvement plan.
Yeah.
They just sign waivers, so um there's nothing we can, we can't enforce them to to maintain that road.
And if they don't care if they're driving over a lousy road, the the big issue would be safety to get in there.
If they don't care, and if a fire truck can't make it down there or whatever, then that's the way it is.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's the, that's what the waiver is for, it absolves the town of liability.
Okay. They're not gonna be happy about that if there's a fire though.
Well, I mean, I think the truck's gonna be able to get there quick enough anyways.
I don't know, I'm not fam- I'm not familiar, I'm not familiar with Flag Road. Where is Flag Road?
Uh you have to go through Loudon to get to it.
Oh, okay.
You gotta go down the path.
Oh, I do know where Flag Road is, I take it back, yeah.
Yeah, so Loudon, Loudon would be the, probably, if there was a call for a fire or something, Loudon would probably respond, but.
It's a long.
Hands out there.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
But uh just have good insurance.
Alright.
Where's Soapstone Road? Dean Road?
Part B?
It says Dean Soapstone Road. Hmm, where's that?
Off of Wilson Road, off of Wilson Road, where it turns to the right to the left, yeah.
Oh, where it goes. Uh that goes to the left, yeah.
Yeah, there's two, two houses out there.
Yep.
Oh, I didn't realize that was a different road.
Oh, yeah?
Well, they've been down there once, yeah.
It is, yeah, yeah.
And what's, um if I may be so bold, what's Q pack? On Ames Road, it says.
Quarterback.
Yeah, ledge pack.
Oh, okay.
Quarterback or ledge pack.
Okay.
Alright.
I have to do a hard road to travel again.
Exactly, alright, so old business?
Yep.
It looks like we've already talked about Old Kilt.
Yep.
So that's set, Shell Meeting House set, so that brings us to retiree healthcare.
Yep. Right, and Cal sent out an email with the costs.
Yep. Yep.
And again, this is for six months. Um we have a meeting scheduled with the Budget Committee in September. Um we'll explain to them what happened with our healthcare this year, what we tried to do for options and what we explored. And um I mean, usually we would say, does anybody have any thoughts or guidance or anything? And then uh I'll start contacting uh health insurance carriers pools. And ask them to look into uh costs for two thousand twenty-six.
Yeah.
And we'll go through the process like we went through um last year. And then in May, when we come down, NHMA was one of these.
Yep.
So we will start that process in September. But this is, this is the cost through the end of the year. You can see what.
Right.
We have two, two where would be an additional cost to the town.
Right.
But just for this six month period until we do something else?
Just for this six month period, correct.
So, yeah. And I guess, do we have the money somewhere if we choose to?
Um Cal sent the budget.
Yep.
To you guys.
Yes.
Um I, you know, looked at it quick.
Yeah.
We're actually doing pretty good.
Yep.
We, when we talked last meeting, we talked about some overages. But overall, we're in pretty good shape because we're carrying a few vacancies, so that helps us out at the bottom line. Um so I I think, you know, um at this point, can we come up with thirty-seven hundred dollars? Cause that's approximately what it would cost.
Yep.
Most likely. I don't think it. I mean, as we get closer to the end of the year, we could talk to the budget directors and say, um if you have money, don't spend it. Those those types of things, yeah.
What do you two? Assuming you looked at at what Cal sent out.
I did.
Yeah.
Healthcare is such a thorny issue.
I think you, I think the the morally right thing to do is to help them out.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, obviously, we didn't, we didn't choose to do this to the employees or retirees. Um but I think the right thing to do is to honor it and and to help them the best we can, at least get through the year until we can renegotiate. I mean, if we have the money, I think that's the right thing to do. But at the same time.
When we're scraping for every five hundred bucks in the budget, it's tough.
It's tough.
But these are our people and that's what we do.
Yeah, you don't wanna, you don't wanna leave someone high and dry and I'm sure most of these people need the healthcare, you know, it's it's.
And it's two at the moment, not.
Correct, two, not three.
Two, not three. Um I would lean towards the yes, um but when we bring it up. When it comes up in the budgeting process, um about where other places we might find money to fund things like this. I think we're going to have to talk a lot about our investment policy. Because we could have been making that money in other places if things had been invested. So I think that's going to be a big conversation come September. Um it's big on my list anyway, because then this would not have been, I could have done this without a, without a second's thought.
I get your point, yeah.
Yeah, I I get you.
So.
Alright, um do we need to make this in the form of a motion or what do you think?
I don't think so.
Okay.
This is a, this is a.
Budget?
Yeah, this is a budget item and.
Yeah.
So I guess I.
So I guess as as. How do we wanna? How do we wanna put the letter so that it's understood that this is, you know, circumstances that were beyond our control?
Sure.
And and we wanna do the right thing for our longtime employees.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know.
Yeah, yeah, no, I I certainly will.
Yeah.
I I responded to the email that we got and, you know, explained that this was beyond the town's control and.
Yeah.
You know, obviously, that that uh, it was a hardship and and we're dealing with it the best we can.
Yeah. Yeah.
But we do have a limited amount of funds, so.
Exactly.
And I'll make that clear when we send, yeah, send emails out to them.
Yeah, sound good, man.
At that sounds right, yes, thank you.
So, okay.
Very good.
But I mean, it it just, you know, I'm thinking back to the conversation from Chief Crotty. Uh, you know, about keeping, attracting people and retaining them, you know. Taking care of your people should make this town so attractive.
Hmm.
Um.
I agree.
Which I think perhaps other towns may pay the money, you know, for the jobs well done, but. You know, how much do they take care of people afterwards? I don't know, but.
Yeah.
You know, that's what makes this town attractive, I would hope.
Do you read the paper?
Yes, yes.
That is correct, sorry.
We digress, but yes.
We're sort of talking.
Sometimes the motion is nice, just so I can.
Certain team.
Yeah, yeah, shall we make a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, yeah.
Calvin will make a motion.
No.
But you don't.
I was like, no. Don't put me on the spot.
Cal is clear, it's all good. Alright, uh. Three sixty-seven Shaker Road update.
Yep, I sent the email to you, uh, they're changing their policy.
Yep, which I think is welcome news.
Uh.
Yes.
So hopefully that will take care of some of the issues that we had earlier.
Yeah. Yeah. That's, that's. Shows the importance of maintaining good relations.
Yes, yep, yeah.
Happy to hear that, yeah.
Yep.
Alright, uh, Bueller Fellowship?
Yep, I have the file here, sent you an email.
Yep.
Um, Mandy's opinion, as long as, as well as the building inspector's letter that he sent. Um, so you guys have to decide tonight. Uh, whether you're gonna exempt the property or not, or or how to proceed.
Yep.
So, um, I did not ask Mr. Davis to come in tonight.
Yep.
I felt it would be better if you guys talked about it, made a determination, and then.
Yeah. Yeah.
If he wants to appeal that, if he can appeal it, so.
So certainly.
If that's, if you choose not to.
Right, right.
If you choose to exempt it.
From what I've read and and my own observations, I I think that we should not exempt the property.
I agree.
I just see no, no evidence that it's being used for religious purposes. I don't think it's being used, period, you know.
I I really rely on um, Mandy's and Joel's assessment of the property and. I really like the phrase absence of qualifying use.
Yeah.
Uh, which I think they made very clear, and I don't think I realized how, um. Uh, bad the buildings were and unusable and, um, yeah, I would agree.
Any further discussion?
So there would, this would be a motion.
Okay, so I will make a motion that we, how should I phrase that? Can that we not exempt?
Deny.
Deny the, deny the exemption.
Deny the exemption. So I'll make a motion that we deny the exemption for Bueller Fellowship.
I second it.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, moving on to Sam Lake House Garage update.
Yep, um, the construction will start with the removal of the shingles and siding uh, next week.
Okay.
Weather permitting.
Yeah.
Um, they will test, test for lead and see if they have. And the, I talked to John and um, the demolition debris will go to our transfer station. So um, so that will start uh, after the fair.
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
Um, there is some, a few things. Once the fair moves everything out of there, there are a few things that the town holds. Um, I don't know if anybody is looking for a couple of old, big, heavy steelcase desks? No.
Definitely.
Put a sign at the whatnot.
I don't, I think they were built in the forties.
Put a sign at the whatnot with a little picture, somebody will pay ten bucks for them.
Yeah, you're gonna take them out there. Uh, the only other thing that's in there that I, I'm not sure what to do with is. There is an old baling machine in there that was used to, you could use it to bail paper.
Hmm.
Or hay, anything like that, and it's a hand-operated, it's.
Hmm.
Um, it was donated to the town many, many years ago, I don't know who donated it to town, it was there, it's been there for a long time. Um, we moved it up to the highway garage when they put the foundation in. I don't know what to do with it, historical society doesn't have any room for it.
Yeah. How about the ag?
I, oh, maybe I could contact them and see if they're all, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Bring it, just wait, just haul it down, slide it in between all the demonstrators at the fair, and somebody will just kinda say, oh, I forgot I brought this with me.
Put it to Briggs.
Not a bad idea.
An old baling machine, you would think.
How interesting, but.
It is very interesting, um.
I've never heard of such a thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there an ag museum in the state of New Hampshire?
I don't know, I'll bet there is, some must.
I mean, there's this Dover museum that's got all kinds of crazy, the, did you hear the thing on NPR the other day about the museum up in the, in Dover?
No.
Um, Woodman Museum?
Hmm.
I mean, it has a, like a taxidermy polar bear and all this crazy stuff.
Hmm.
But it might just be Dover central.
Right, I will check with the ag commission.
Yeah. Thank you, Mark, my, my time capsule, there we go.
Yeah, I put it in.
Perfect.
For the try.
I'll send.
Alright, uh, that brings.
And he's fine, I'm I'm sorry, and Mr. Galena's is fine, he had a.
Pardon me?
Didn't, who's doing the work on the um?
Rubble iron.
Oh, rubble iron, okay, never mind.
Yeah.
Wrong question.
Yeah.
No worries.
Okay.
Uh, Shaker, Shaker Heights is the name of the company.
That's right, okay.
Alright, last item on the agenda is all board meeting update.
Okay.
Yep, um, so I sent out a quite, uh, emailed everybody with a date.
Yep.
Um, I've gotten quite a few responses, uh, haven't heard the trustees, trust fund, the energy committee. I think the chairman of the ZBA, it was only three that I think I haven't heard, but everybody else is is it.
Not energy committee? I'll send.
Energy committee?
I'll send a, I'll blast something off to Ruth.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I guess from my standpoint, um, if we're hosting this, and I think we are, what do we wanna cover at this meeting? You know, we don't have to decide tonight obviously, but but just think about that.
Well, we should put in ideas for agenda if nothing else, so people will have that in hand beforehand.
Exactly. Yeah. So I think, did I? I think I included you guys on the email that I sent out, the invitation, did I? I can't remember.
I think so.
It was, it was.
Yes.
To discuss the code of conduct.
Yep.
Yeah.
And any other business, I think it was the way I worded it, yeah.
Yeah.
Go over the sheets on the wall, it's pretty much what we're gonna be doing.
Um, and the note I was going to bring up to Cal earlier was. Um, it came, uh, I started to think about um, boards and how they work. And then we signed appointment slips the other day for several people new to the ZBA, but. And I happen to know one of them, but I don't really know the other one, and I realized we're signing appointment slips without. We're assuming that they are coming with the recommendation of the board, but we don't know what that recommendation is. And I, for one thing, it would, it would be nice, it would be a good idea if when an appointment slip comes through. That the board itself who's putting this person forward says, this is why we think this person would be good. And, you know, some, you know, it's not a true vetting process, but at least have some ideas opposed to just saying, oh yeah, they think they're great, but but why?
I don't know.
Is that too complicated or?
Well, I think we might open ourselves up to, you know, what if? What if it's someone that not everybody loves and endorses? But they're gonna be a good ZBA member.
Well, that would be fine if that's what they, if the, if the committee itself can say, this is why we think this person would be good. If I personally don't love and adore them, that doesn't matter. It shouldn't matter, and it wouldn't to me, but I would, I would want to know why the board that we're signing this person up for. Thinks that this is a good fit. If it's too complicated, I'm, you know.
I was gonna say, ZBA historically, when I sat on it, if somebody was an alternate or whatever, it would be brought up to the board. We discussed the person, pros, cons, their experience, et cetera, and then if we all agreed that they'd be a good match, then we'd push it to the select board.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
But then the select board never hears any of that discussion, so.
Right, right. But but maybe.
Well, it was in the minutes, like for the ZBA one, they invited both people there, interviewed them during the meeting, and it should be in the minutes about.
Yeah.
You, and recorded that you could see the interview.
Yeah.
Or maybe the chair could just slip a note, hey, we'd like to, these people think they'd be an asset kind of thing?
Well, you know, that would be fine if if we got a, if if ahead of time, we knew we were signing appointment slips and they could, if we just knew, okay. See discussion, ZBA meeting of January twelfth or whatever, and then I would be happy to go look at it and just see. Their finer points without bringing it up at one of, one of our meetings, but I I didn't even, I guess I just never really thought about it. Um, actually, until I was saying to Ken, until I went to that training over in Jaffrey, where they did talk about vetting. Uh, people on their committees for certain reasons.
Hmm.
Um, so.
Well, and as we've seen, it's not always on the chat, I suppose.
No, it is not, but I think it's better than not, and just. Maybe I'm just nosy, but I like to know, I like to know what I'm signing and why I'm signing it as a, so.
So then, um, cause usually they contact me to say, hey, can you put this on the select board's agenda so I can just. When I send it to you guys, say, here's the minutes. So I don't think it needs to be on that meeting.
Okay, you don't, you don't even need to look up the minutes, just say, check back. I mean, you don't have to go through and find the minutes and copy it, but.
I can make them tell me when it was, like, it was at this meeting that they discussed it.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and then I'll go back and look, okay, that would, that would be, that would be fine, thank you. I just, I I try to be hesitant about signing things without really knowing what I'm signing, even if I know the name.
Alright, any other business?
Yes, uh, I got an email, I got a message from the electrician. Um, he sent me the estimate for what he felt would be needed for the transfer station if we want the three phase up there.
Hmm. Yep.
Um, between eighteen and nineteen thousand dollars. And that would uh, give us three phase, definitely a new panel, new entrance.
Yeah.
Um. That would uh, put three phase to the existing baler and three phase to a compactor.
Yep.
Um, any other?
So it would be two hundred and.
It's two seventeen, I think.
Seventeen, I think, I think you're right.
So plus another eighteen to nine, nineteen, which again are, that's the, that's the market rate now.
Right.
So we don't know what equipment cost will be if we decide to do it in a year or two or three or.
Right.
Um, but, but I sent that to George Holt at Aries. So he could have that, he responded, thank you, so he will be getting back to us.
Yeah.
But that's still less than the numbers that were floating around, isn't it? People just saying like three hundred fifty thousand or, I mean, the numbers.
Well.
That were floated about three phase seemed a lot more than two seventeen.
Didn't that include, didn't that include the new compactor though, or no?
No.
No, that's not the cost of the compactor, I can't remember what the cost of the compactor was, I have, we, they hit the warrant articles for sixty thousand.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, sixty thousand.
Yeah.
So, um, and but then you'd have associated costs with a truck.
Right.
Um, probably a couple of, an extra, extra uh, container, you know.
Right.
Those, those types of things you'd have to look at also.
Right.
But I think that's what George is gonna, is gonna provide.
Yeah, and this puts us in the, much more in the ballpark, I think, than we were.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you start looking at the cost of three phases, the cost of a new compactor. Um, a, a truck to haul it, and then, you know, we talked about maybe some kind of office trailer or something like that. I would imagine you're gonna be in the half a million dollar range.
Yep.
My thoughts.
Which is, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Did we ever? Said, did we ever maybe reach out to the school? Cause they, they were talking about the, the power upgrade at the school, maybe we could piggyback off each other or try to save some money?
Yeah, so I talked to the, I did not talk to the school, but I talked to the unito rep.
Mm-hmm.
And he missed the meeting he was supposed to be at with the school, so.
Thank you.
So I could contact the school and ask them what what happened, but I don't know if they did anything because he wasn't there, so I I don't know.
Okay. But I I can check in on the next school board meeting, the first of of August.
To see, yes?
Okay, yeah, do you want, you wanna ask them about that?
Yeah, I can ask that.
Alright, alright.
Yeah, that might help because that would.
Yeah. It may reduce the cost of the three phase to the.
Yeah. Couple hundred.
Uh, yeah, 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 a couple of poles.
Yeah.
Well, that adds up.
Uh. Might get down to two hundred thousand.
Well, I mean, that might be your cost for the three phase to the, the facility.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, 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 right, yeah.
You know?
And and that just. It's still less than a whole new transfer station if that's what this takes care of. So, and then, and that's yet to be, um, seen, so.
Yeah.
I think this is an important part, and excuse, I have to ask this, and it's the dumbest question perhaps, what does it mean a new entrance? I, I'm, I keep tripping over that.
Where the power comes into the building.
Yeah.
The, anything from the, um, weatherhead, which is the pipe that goes up to the top of the building where the wire goes in.
Yeah.
From the weatherhead down is the town's responsibility. So we have to buy a new meter socket, and where that, where that meter is on the side of the building, that meter socket.
Oh, so where the power actually physically enters the building?
Where the wire, where the wire comes into the building.
Okay. Okay.
That whole section has to be, this town. They'll supply it to what they call the weatherhead, which is where, where it comes to the, to the side of the building.
Okay. Got it. Thank you, huh?
Yep.
Trimming a little bit with the all, the all boards meeting. I had H D C last week, and they have a new secretary. So the conversation came up to potentially have all the land use secretaries get together and sit down and divvy out roles and make sure everybody knows. What their tasks are and who's to do what. Um, Cheryl's the new secretary, and she was very open to that because she's obviously in the learning curve and wants to do the job the way that they want it.
Cheryl who?
Andrew.
I was like, I, last name is.
Andrew?
Cheryl Andrew, she, um, earlier in the year.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Put out the ad for, um, her as a recording secretary.
Who finally, that's right, who finally, yeah, good.
She answered the ad and was willing to do, to be upfilling for meetings, and then we asked her to.
Yep.
Do the H D C, like be the dedicated H D C secretary, and she agreed.
Yep. Good.
So last meeting was her first real start into it, she's attended a couple.
Yeah.
Uh, so Michelle and I have been working with her to get her all set up and trained, and she's working with Michelle and process, and. So, um, were there specific things they wanted?
I thi- I think it was mostly coming from Kevin as to who notices, sort of the same things we've been dealing with in terms of notices, agendas, who puts what out, when they're supposed to put it out.
Uh, yes.
Uh.
Yeah.
That kind, and if you guys are addressing it, I don't think there's an issue then, I just wanted to bring it up because it was brought up at the last meeting.
We are.
Yeah.
Yeah, Michelle and Cheryl are working on that, so.
Perfect.
Um, for Cheryl, we're trying to do a purely like recording secretary versus land use administrator thing.
Yeah.
Um, this is kind of the first opportunity we've had to like really try that from the beginning, so. Uh, Cheryl is just gonna be at the meetings doing the minutes, sending out the minutes, and all the agendas and organization and applications.
Yeah. Sounds good. Alright, uh, anything further we need to adjourn into a non-public, correct?
Yes, yes.
Anything else public?
Uh, not for me, thank you.
Okay, so.
Oh, wait, I like, um, one, just a quick thing, um, do we have any, um, uh, municipal records committee thing scheduled anytime in the future?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, the last two weeks have been a word that I'm not willing to say.
Okay, no, I know, I just wanted to.
Don't say it.
So I might have time, but I'm not willing.
Leave it, leave it there.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, I just didn't know.
Anything further and you'll regret it, so.
Was just looking like towards October to fill in my start figuring in October.
I don't feel October's too far for it.
No, it's not, it's, have you seen, you wanna see October?
I don't just wanna see August.
Alright, so, uh, I'm gonna make a motion that we adjourn into a non-public session per RSA ninety-one dash eight colon three.
Why?
Roman numeral two A. Looking for a second.
Uh, second.
All those in favor?
I.